The City of Madeira Beach, special meeting. Today is Thursday, December 12th, and the time is 3:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this afternoon's invocation?
I will, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Heavenly Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future, as well as the rights and needs of both the individual and our community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. It's always in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here. Approval of minutes, there is no minutes. Next, approval of the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion amongst the commission? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this afternoon? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Next, presentations. Presentation by Wanamaker-Jensen Architects and Hennessy Construction on new city complex project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and commission members and members of the public. Today is a momentous occasion. This is a year's worth of work, and it comes to a halt possibly today. Wanamaker-Jensen Architects and Hennessy are here to not only show you the final design, what your building's going to look like inside and out, but also give you a GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price. And if you're comfortable with everything you see today, you can approve it, and we're done. Remember, I had used the analogy, there's going to be several kicks at the cat before we get there. We're here. We've had several town meetings throughout the year. We've taken this up as a board of commission several times, including the bonding, and the financing is now in place. The money part of this has been taken care of. And we can get into that later, but what we'd first like to start off with is, both groups are going to, I think, present in unison on the new facility. Commission members, you had seen this on a one-on-one basis. If you feel the need, you're welcome to come on down and see the presentation. Otherwise, if you're comfortable just staying where you're at, that's fine as well. But for the members of the public, we'd like to show a short presentation, and then there's a PowerPoint breakdown in the back of the room. If no one has the handout, raise your hand, and we'll be sure to get you one. And then with that, I'd like to introduce Jason Wanamaker and Mark Stalker, and I think we can just kick off the presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please. Do we have the wireless mic?
Pleasure to be here today. Jason Jensen with Wanamaker-Jensen Architects, and I have our project manager Harold Samariva helping me out today. He's been working alongside. And I'll let the contractors, Hennessy, introduce themselves when they come up. But it's been a pleasure to work with staff and many of you from the community as well. We've gone through all of the different departments, seen their needs, talked to them about their future needs, looked at how everybody works together on this site, spent a lot of time out here investigating everything that you have and everything that could be, and how we can put it together in the most efficient manner. So there's been so many meetings and so many man-hours put into what you see here today. What you don't see is a set of 300 drawings that are in permitting at the moment. Just an overview, there have been no permitting issues, no permitting comments that will hinder this project in any way. So I wanted to take a step back. Some of you are probably very familiar and seen a lot on the master plan to date, but for some of you that are coming in a little bit later, want to make sure that you know everything that's included in the master plan, because what is being approved today is the whole site, everything that goes into this site. So you have your current site, and just to focus you, this is your existing building. This is the city hall, fire station, library, municipal drive. You have ballfields of different shapes that you might not be used to seeing ballfields in, square, your large ballfield, some ballfields up on the water, your existing recreation center, and then your field at the end of the drive. And you'll notice that this drive deadens, and your parking lot is focused on this area. So a few of the observations in the beginning of the project was, you know, how can we reorganize this in a way that gives more of the parkland back to the people, create a walking path, and nice feature along the water that's attractive for the community? We also wanted to give fields that were the correct size, so that you really could bring in tournaments, and that the Little League and both Little League and softball could utilize those fields. Really make them multipurpose. One of the goals with the rec center was to let them to have views and make that a feature that was also an amenity for people to come to this site from anywhere in Madeira Beach. And then looking closer at the fire station, right now, they have to back in to the fire station, which is not advantageous. Your parking is not connected, so if you're trying to find a parking space right now, you're back on Municipal Drive if you can't find a parking space, and the same configuration within the city hall complex. So there's some things that we wanted to alleviate as we moved forward. And then you can see the new plan. So again, Municipal Drive, you have the library. Now, if you come into the drive, it's all connected. So if you can't find a parking space along the south, you can come back into this parking as all one space. You have a turnaround, so you don't have to do a three-point turn at the end. And then the fire station has its own drive. So no longer, I think even in some of the events, they actually have to ask people to move from parking in front of the fire station, and they can't get the fire engines out. So if there's emergency, obviously, they're going to get pushed out, but right now, you have fire engines that are crossing the path with the public, which isn't a good situation. So now, when they come out, they come directly out of Municipal Drive, and they're in no conflict with any of your public parking. So that's the reason why you see one drive, then two drives. And when they come into the fire station, they come in from this direction, so they have direct drive-through bays now. You have your city hall, all facing the water, all views to the water, and you'll see when we get into the 3D model how you can go under and connect in with your waterfront park. This is a park system that will be, you'll have trees, you'll have shade, you'll have places to stop, places to have a picnic, places to just continue walk a loop around the park. You see, we put all of the active program farther south, closer to the road, you can get out of your car, you're directly into the sports complex. Basketball, tennis, concession, playground. If you have a child playing Little League, and you have another child that's a little bit younger, you can have them at the playground when you have Little League directly next door. So trying to get all of those things closer together, so that it can really work together. Then with the fields, we have fields that you can use for either softball or for Little League. We have them the correct dimension that you can attract tournaments. We've done a lot of coordination with the sports commission to make sure that they have the amenities that could attract them. And one of the keys there is that you don't just have your ballfields, you have your adjacent rec center, and you have your adjacent multipurpose room and fitness room. So when you're looking at bringing a team in that's from Wisconsin, for say, and they're just godforsaken cold, and they want to get to Florida, you know, they come down here, and they have fitness, multipurpose, and their fields all in one place, so they can stay there, they can have meals, they can work out, all in one place. So if you just had fields, you're not as attractive, but because you have all these other amenities, you have a lot more attractive of a site. With this third field, again, the idea is to make everything as multipurpose as possible. The outfield is a removable fence, so when you have your large events, this entire area is usable for a large event. So king of the beach, this entire field can be used for that. And the rec center becomes a backdrop. Also, you have toilet rooms and support for those functions. We also have other smaller event spaces that you can use throughout sites. So the site as it is right now, think of potentially two events going on at the same time, and allowing this to really become a destination for not just the activities that are going on now, but a lot of new activities that aren't occurring right now. Okay. And of course, we have the dog park. We have that directly adjacent to parking, so you can get out of your car, use the dog park, come back, or continue to walk through the park, either one. We have a few other concessions and shades dispersed throughout. But overall, activity, passive park that you didn't have before, and function, making sure that each building functions very well. So you have your current aerial site plan, current city hall, and then we have the new site plan. And you can see how the waterfront is changed, and how the circulation works. I'm going to dive in a little bit more into the space themselves. This is the rec center. We'll start with the rec center. Your water is here. You have a multipurpose room that opens up onto this deck. Right now, the rec center functions with a large pavilion, and they use that for lunches, they use that for outdoor program space, but it's disconnected from the building, so if it is raining, they really can't use that as part of their space. So now, the covered space is connected to the building. They can use that, if it's raining, they can still go outside, at least get the kids out of the air conditioning for a little while, and use it for a program space. So even though it's not air-conditioned, and you're not paying money to air-condition that space, it's still a space that the kids can use, since it's attached to the building. This space will be a rentable space that will be used for the rec center, but can also be used for wedding receptions or other activities. The community can request that they reserve that room. And it's directly on the water, and it has pre-function space to be able to serve that. You have kitchen, catering kitchen associated with that. You have a lobby, you have game room, you have homework room. The spaces that you currently have at the rec center are being replaced within this center. You have toilet rooms that can also be used by some of the functions that happen in the park, then storage mechanical. So focus being on the water. Right now, they don't have any view from the rec center. Now you will have view from every room of the rec center to the water. And this would be a view from the water, from a sailboat, actually, looking back to the rec center, and you can see how this covered space, and then the windows into those rooms below. And all of the buildings, you'll see a lot of glass on the water, and not so much glass on the other side, so we really tried to consolidate it where the views were, and where you could get the most effect from it. Could you bring it to the SketchUp model and show them around the rec center a bit? Everything for this project was done in three dimensions, so that you could see around the project, so that everybody could make sure that it was well-coordinated. One of the neat aspects for the rec center is really the side that faces the multipurpose field. One of the goals for each one of these buildings is that it can be used for multiple purposes. So you're building a rec center, but in this case, it's also a bandshell. So you're not building another bandshell somewhere else and spending more money to do that. We use the rec center as a backdrop. We have a wall that could be movies in the park, it could be projections for an event or a concert, they could put video up on that wall. And really, the rec center is like, you know, two arms that face the event. So it really focuses out for the people here. We've extended the floor to become a stage. And that was some of the input that the community and the commission gave us, you know, how can we, you know, inject more program into that? And I thought it was a great suggestion. Then you can see, on this side, the canopy, and how it connects to that multipurpose room that would be able to be a rentable or reserved space, and then some of the rooms for the kids back here. And, you know, this building is designed that it can be expanded in the future, that if programs grow and are bringing revenue, then you can expand that. But right now, it is replacing this very similar footprint to the spaces that you have currently. Okay, if you could go back to those. Now, I'm sorry, it's a bit lengthy, but there's quite a bit here to talk about, which is good. I'm going to step into the fire station for a moment. This is the entry that would be facing the city hall. So you have a main entry, you have your office and admin focused around your entry, and we have secure doors that enter the living quarters of the fire station, day room, significant kitchen, dorm rooms, toilet rooms, easy access to the bay, the apparatus bay, and from the living area, again, easy access to the apparatus bay. We have outdoor patio area, and we have some of your support areas, your generator, your gear, storage spaces associated with the fire station. Very efficient, there's really not a lot of leftover space, but we have places allocated for all of the equipment that they have currently. And this is a image, we'd be looking to the main entry. So you have your offices in this area, dorm rooms, and then the entry to the apparatus And we'll just zoom over there in our helicopter. And you see, this would be how you, they can come and enter the apparatus bay from this side, and then exit from this side. And we've, even though that these buildings are all raised up significantly to deal with the FEMA regulations, it's all been calculated into the civil plan to make sure that everything is accommodated appropriately. Then as they exit, and then come to Municipal Drive, this would be approximately your view from Municipal Drive. And the doors to the apparatus bay, we have an impact-rated glass, that's an option, so that from the drive, you can see the fire engines, and they get light into the apparatus bay instead of just having it completely dark when the doors are shut. Okay? Okay. Take you to the city hall. The public parking is from the south. We have a stair that raises up, then goes to the outdoor deck area. You know, we talked before about how it is more reminiscent of John's Pass or waterfront having that outdoor deck area that connects to multipurpose, to toilet rooms, catering kitchen for the multipurpose room, and the fitness center. All of this, it's really important that all of this is directly accessible from the outside. So if you're renting out a room, or if somebody wants, has a key card, and they want to get into the fitness center, they don't have to go through office space. They can be given that access anytime, so it really makes it more of a community asset to be able to do it the way that's being done. And we also didn't spend money on air conditioning, large portions of this space, just to access a couple of those rooms. So it's more Florida-friendly and efficient at the same time. You have your city hall chambers. It has a special shape to it that we really believe will be something that can be seen around the city and become a bit of an icon for Madeira Beach. Whenever you have an event coming up, there would be a picture showing the chambers. The city hall itself has directors and has open, flexible office space that can be changed and reconfigured as departments change, and allow some flexibility in those spaces. And the overall square footage for the office space is actually less than you have in this building. So through the design and making sure that we right-size the spaces, that we have efficient circulation, you know, there aren't huge offices here, everybody has the right-sized spaces and flexible. We have less square footage than you have right now. So we want to make sure that we're not overbuilding for where you're at, but allow that flexibility. So if in the future, you add another department, there'll be space to reconfigure this furniture and allow that department to happen. If 50 years down the road, you need to expand the building, there's an option to do that as well. We haven't put you into a box that you can't grow either. So we want to make sure that you all have that type of flexibility to grow and to change as you need to, without needing to pay a significant amount of money to change around and reconfigure this space. This would be the entry, the stairs, city hall chambers. And what you'll notice is that we wanted to pull the building apart and allow you to access the water. The water's the focus here, and being able to walk around the park. So this allows you to access the water from below, and then obviously, it's raised up for FEMA to the flood level, and then access your other rooms. So the city hall on this side, the multipurpose room, fitness center on this side, there's an elevator to the left, and, yeah, so it's fully accessible from either level. And this would be a view from the water side. So you have your water here, you have your boardwalk level up here, the city hall chambers. This would be the access that you just came through, the front door. And this would be a berm that the ground comes up to the building, but also, we need to come, we need to change that elevation anyways, so let's make it into an amphitheater or a city square. So Madeira Beach really doesn't have a typical city square, so we thought that this was an opportunity to provide some civic space associated, which could, again, be programmed or leased out to different events. This would be the image looking across the channel. At night, you can see that area where the ground is bermed up to the boardwalk, you have the chambers. The chambers at night, they could be lit up different colors for different events, different holidays. So, you know, again, you have that branding that can be associated with an event. If you have, say, breast care awareness event here, you could have a color that is associated with that. And so it's very flexible space. With that, I'll hand it over to the contractor to talk about the GMP.
Thanks. My name's Mark Stalker. I'm with Hennessy Construction. And similar to Jason, we've got some of our staff here. We have Sid Tolsma, he'll be the senior project manager, and Gary Martin, senior superintendent on site. So I wanted to go through the guaranteed maximum price of that beautiful building you just saw. I kind of, I want to start with a little bit of history on where we started and how we got to the point we're at right now. The last time I gave any cost numbers to this group was in October of 2012. And at that time, we did a range budget, because we really didn't have any drawings. It was a concept, so we did a range of the buildings and the ballfields, all in of a range of an $8,000,001 project up to an $8,000,008 project. We were also asked at that point, back in October of 2012, to price some options. And one of the options was, at the time, what if we raised the buildings, put them on pilings, and raised them up? Because these initial budgets were based on bringing in filler onto the site, elevating it with fill, and just doing standard foundations. And when we did that analysis, we came up with it would cost an additional $1,004,000 if we had to drive piling and raise the building up. So those budgets would have been 9.5 to 10.3 back in October of 2012. So what's happened since then? We went out, which is good, due diligence, and we did some geotechnical soil borings of the site. And what we found is, the soil under the buildings wouldn't support, not only the weight of the buildings, but it wouldn't even support the weight of the fill. Because if you're bringing in six feet of dirt, it has a lot of weight. And so what would have happened is, you would have got uneven settlement and potential building problems if you built on that fill. So we had to go to pilings, and had to elevate the building. And the other thing that happened is, originally in October, we wanted to start construction in April of this year, so we would have been bidding the project in January of this year. Since January of this year, construction prices have increased 3% to 4% since that time. So we've had to overcome that hurdle also. We've had price increases, we had to drive pilings, and those were some of the challenges we faced when we're putting together this budget and keeping this job within budget. So, let's get to the numbers. We, oh, and that's not going to stop. The construction industry is starting to boom. We're expecting increases in pricing again in January, and we'll see them all through next year. They'll probably be greater next year as things get more busy. So in other words, the more you wait, the cost isn't going to go anywhere but up. So, this is just to kind of give you a visual, the pilings. This is a view, if you were underground, looking up at the building, and what the foundation system, we ended up having to do, and all the vertical poles or the pilings we're going to have to drive. And then what happens is, your concrete slab is elevated, so you're having to form the bottom of the concrete. It's more expensive to make the floor system for the building. So let's go through the numbers. These are the building numbers where we stand right now. Like Jason said, we took 300-page set of drawings, we put them out to the market, and we got subcontractor bids in, and assembled an estimate. So the buildings themselves, the foundations, the pilings, the buildings, for city hall, multipurpose, the fire station, and the rec center are $7,582,573. The site work, which includes all the site work and the parking lots, the road improvement, the ballfields, is $1,557,245. And then the landscaping and irrigation for the whole property is $221,837. So the hard cost of the building, site work, is $9,361. Now, we got the buildings, we got to fill it with the things that people need to use. In a lot of projects, there's a lot of furniture and equipment from the existing building that can be reused in the new building. Unfortunately, the case here, there's no opportunity to reuse what's here in the new building. So, we've got these fixtures, furnishings, allowances. So we're going to have site furnishings, benches, park benches, $45,023. We have all the, all new furniture for the city hall, multipurpose fire station and rec center for $193,316. We have appliances for the firemen, new kitchen equipment in the multipurpose space, to have a kitchen to prepare food if you rent out the spaces. That's $21,266. And then we have to do all the computer and IT wiring to get it ready for the new phone system and the new computer system. It's another $63,799. The new building will have a security system, so there can be access control to the building. There'll be cameras, so it'll have a secure building. And that's a $58,483. And new audiovisual systems, so in the commission chambers, cameras, new sound system, everything it needs to be a properly functioning commission chamber, also the offices, and the fire station especially, needs all the up-to-date technology and audiovisual. That's $500,000. That's 500, that totals $523,182. And we think there needs to be a contingency carried to be safe. Contingency would only be used if anything unforeseen. Above pricing is based on hard design plans and specs with subcontractor input. If anything were to happen unforeseen, we want to carry a contingency to take care of it. If that doesn't get used, it gets returned at the end of the job. If we don't need it, we don't spend it. So that gets us to a guaranteed maximum price of $10,084,837. And if you remember, way back in October of 2012, could have been anywhere with the pilings from 9.5 to 10.3. So we overcame some of the issues, the cost increases, a lot of hard work with us, city staff, and the architectural team to make sure, like Jason said, this building is just the size and just the kind of complexity it needs to be to function. Nothing extravagant. There's an added bonus. Being a city, we can run material purchases through the city and save the sales tax. In other words, right now, this number includes all the applicable sales tax, and we manage that as the construction manager. What happens is, as you buy the material, you realize that savings as you go along, so you really don't know it till the end. But our historical data says that we should achieve at least $115,000 in additional savings just by doing the, not paying sales tax. I mean, that's easy money found. We do all the legwork. It's very good for nonprofits and cities. So what we think at the end of the day, the project will cost is $9,969,837. That's for a rep. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have the floor. And Mark, I appreciate, and Jason, I appreciate the presentation. I think that that gave you a very historical, you know, timeline of where we're at. The last 72 hours have been some pretty difficult hours, and I want to say thank you to the team that put in all that time. Another thing that we've done is take out the IT portion of just the computers, the hardware things that are going to be in the facility. And the reason for that is we have the exact same contractor under contract here with the city. They built our new website. They do our IT maintenance, so on and so forth. And by taking that out, and this is nothing against Tennessee, if we do that by ourselves, everything that Tennessee does for us as a general contractor has a markup on it. And so if we can handle that as staff, even if it is, you know, on a $200,000 item, if you're going to save five, six, seven percent, that's real dollars. And so tonight, if this, if this does go through, we're asking you to approve additional dollars so that the city can go ahead and buy those new computers. And if you, if you've been around City Hall, you all have been, computers have not been replaced, servers have not been replaced. There's new technology in regards to the cloud and different securities that we need to do moving into this new facility. And so there is an additional cost. It's minute or smaller than, you know, it's a $10 million project. $200,000 is a lot of money, but looking at the grand scheme of things, it's small, but we can save on doing that. And so there'd be an additional expense that we would ask you to approve tonight as well, for this afternoon.
Goodness, Mr. City Manager. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Proceed. Are you after a motion? I make a motion to approve the overall municipal project designed in its entirety, as well as an approval of the guaranteed maximum price for the project of $10,84,837, and additional approval of $220,471 for informational technology, equipment, labor, and networking costs for a total project budget of $10,305,308. I second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion amongst the commission? And I'd like to say, Mr. Crawford, I know the hours you've put into this. I've been there with you on probably a portion of them, if I've seen. And to the Finance Director, being there on the financing. Ladies and gentlemen, that's a future rock star in Pinellas County, because that guy is, talk about knowing how to spend money and what he did for this city to put this together is outstanding. Vince, thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up to public com, I'm sorry.
If I could just have the floor, and Vince is always very shy about the good work that he does. When we put this bond together, remember our biggest concern, I take that back, the overall cost was a major concern for us, but we were more concerned with our debt service. What can we afford per year to pay for this project? And remember when we were going through that bond process, the bond market took a turn on us, and the economy was bouncing back, and so rates had fluctuated. But when we went to bond, we did substantially well. So even though your overall price, as Mark alluded to, has escalated a little bit in regards to, you know, to the poor soils and the other thing, you know, the inflation that we've experienced over the last year because we've been delayed for a number of different reasons, at the end of the day, your annual debt service doesn't change because of how the bond market was when we went out for bond. And Vince, I don't know if you can put that any more elegantly than I did, but...
No, I mean, you hit on what I was going to say. Basically, the, if the question is how to fund this, the answer is pretty simple. The city commission is well aware of the bond process that we went through back in October, so that's phase one. The rest of it is all available in your budget, based partially on what Shane said. So at the time, leading up to adopting our budget, the market took a turn for the worse. And so we thought we would only be able to issue $4.4 million worth in bond, $4.4 million worth of bonds. But in the couple of weeks leading up to pricing, the market turned again in our favor. And so we were able to issue more bonds for the same amount of debt service, which is what Shane was referring to. And on the other end, we had planned in the budget for significant cost of issuance related to the bond, because at the time, we had the bond validation pending, and we, there was so much uncertainty regarding that, that we budgeted quite conservatively for that, and costs came in well below. So in your budget, without touching fund balance, you can fund this project.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director.
So you're saying to us there's no change in our budget whatsoever, Vince?
There will be, there will be two changes. One will be to increase revenue, which is easy enough and good news, and the other is to decrease expenditures for cost of issuance. So it's, it's pretty simple, really. You have more money than you thought you would have, and you had fewer expenses than you thought you would have. So those two, moving in those directions helps quite a bit. And those two amendments, which we can make at the next regular meeting, will provide the additional funding for the project.
But at the end of the day, your annual mortgage payment, if you will, stayed the same, even though your costs for the actual facility went up. And again, remember, we were delayed for a number of reasons, and we don't need to, you know, dive into that. But there was months and months of delay for a number of different reasons. So you had the four percent on top of that. You put your, you know, we have nothing but probably dredged fill out there is probably what we're considering. So you had those two things together, and we were dead on more than a year ago. So those are the only things that added to, added to the expenditure, which was our job in the last, I'd say, 30 days. How are we going to do this with the increased expenditure and keep our debt service the same? Remember, Vince and I were having some heartburn about what that number was going to be. We were very conservative, and that keeps, gives you flexibility in the future. So again, you should feel very comfortable in this. Even though that the price went up, at the end of the day, the payment you're going to make every year stays the same.
Well, congratulations to you, young man.
Oh, congratulations to you. It's good news for everybody. We met all the goals related to the project financially, so we're in good shape.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Vince, thank you. And at this time, I'll open it up to public comment. Would anybody like to say anything or make a comment? No? Yes, sir.
Drake Philbrook, 800 Bay Point Drive. We've lived here for quite a while. In fact, I first moved to the area in 1972. We've been investing in real estate here in Madera Beach in the last few years and have been looking for an opportunity to start investing more in our community. And we're excited to see all of the new projects that are going on around here that are helping to bring Madera Beach into the future. And I think this is a perfect example of Madera Beach leading the way, and I'm very excited. Well, thank you. Like I said...
Thank you.
Mr. Poe.
I'm Poe. Here on Madera Beach, when I talk to friends of mine who live on other beaches, they say, "You guys are really setting the woods on fire down here." It sure do seem to be. There's not much to say about this, except that it's awesome. We're fast becoming, the little story used to be when you were a kid was, we're the little engine that could.
Mr. Stack.
Robin Stack, 728 Sunset Cove. I just want to break, real brief about what happens when you build a new building. You guys built a new Marina. I've related this story once already to one of our commissioners. I went in there the other day for a business purpose. Clean, organized, neat. Employees were happy. I just mentioned to an employee, "Boy, you guys got a raise, right?" What was the response was, "We don't just work here for the money, we're public." Here's the point I'm making. When you build something really new and really neat, everybody feels good about it. We're building a new rec center, a baseball field, and a great-looking city hall. But this even goes a little deeper. It goes to the management. Dave Marsakano, Shane. The management style is not friendly, but it's not mean. If you understand what I'm saying. It's, we got a job to do, let's do a good job of it, but nobody's beating anybody up or tapping them in the back, et cetera. And it shows with the attitude of the employees. So I think, build it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Matt Loder, and I live in Seminole, but we've been in Madera Beach and Seminole since 1968, my family. But, you know, we're interested in Madera Beach all the time because we're in the seafood restaurant business, and we've been in business before in Madera Beach. But all the things we see happening here on Madera Way with the, the events on the weekends and everything, and the new work at Archibald Park and everything, and now with a possible new city hall, all this is very interesting to us, and it's very good. We're real happy about it, seeing the progress. Just glad to be part of it, possibly. Thank you.
Mr. Loder, it's good seeing you in Madera Beach again.
Good evening. Good afternoon, actually. Guy Cretelli, 13025 Palican Lane. This project is going to be one of the best one we're going to see on Madera Beach. It's going to be beautiful. And I brought my shovel and my troco called D the Dirt to start it.
Thank you, Guy. Bob.
My name is Robert Shaw, and I live at 507-129th Avenue in Madera Beach. I just want to say that people who have never sat in these chairs don't know how much work, how much effort has gone into it on the part of this board and everybody else who's involved with it. I just hope you're well aware that your work just began, because this is such a major project, and I think you're to be applauded for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Smith. I'm actually a resident of Treasure Island and gotten to know some of the gentlemen on the project, giving a little bit of input here and there. But I just want to say thank you to everybody and also to the community members, because I view you guys as progressive. Pinellas County, I've been a big fan. I've lived all over the world, but this is the best place on earth. And this project is huge. I'm in the sports industry, I was a softball player, and the opportunity for new fields for young athletes is tremendous. So I really hope that some of the other communities within Pinellas County will, will follow you guys. But again, you're progressive, and the leadership has been amazing, so I'm super excited about this project. Thank you.
Actually, you nailed it on the head in going back to a meeting we had when we had Mr. Smith come in from the Pinellas County Sports Committee and coming in and saying that we'd be able to, they'd be able to bring 41 events a year into the city of Madera Beach, and bringing young people in and people seeing our city and moving here and raising a family.
Yeah, dear. Good idea, Travis.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, and Michelle is incredibly modest. Michelle, do you want to get up and tell everybody a quick bio? Because I think it's impressive. Michelle's an ex-Olympian, and she's very, very modest about that, but she, yeah, she...
I played into Olympic Games. I was in the '96 and 2000 Olympics, and I played 16 years professionally in Japan. But I really champion causes for women and children all over the world. And so just the fact that this community is so supportive and doing things to get people out moving, and it's not just women and children, but people in general, and getting people outdoors is, I think, a major accomplishment. And again, I love the fact that you guys are so progressive moving forward, and I really hope that other city leadership within Pinellas County will do the same thing.
The only problem is you need to live in Madera Beach.
Knew that was coming.
Would any fellows like to make a comment? At this time, I will ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Listre.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Poe.
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz.
Great pleasure, yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Outstanding job with your staff, your team, so thank you.
We love you, Shane.
I was going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. If anybody at this time would like to leave, or if they'd want to stay for the consent agenda, that's fine. So if anybody wants to leave, I'll give everybody a second. Who wants to leave? If not, I'll move on with the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out this afternoon. Thank you very, very much.
It'll take three minutes.
Yeah, we actually will take a three-minute recess. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Can I make a motion? We approve the consent agenda as written.
A second.
Motion's made for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Mr. Mayor, the staff would ask, respectfully ask, that you remove number four from the consent agenda so we could discuss it.
All righty. Do you want that brought up as a separate, or do you want to remove it to the next meeting?
No, no. We're here to make the decision today. It's probably harder than the last one you made, but we're going to do it today.
We'll not just discuss it during the consent agenda.
I think if you're going to discuss one item, I think it needs to be taken out specifically.
Okay. So you want to go ahead and...
Can I just walk you through these, just for, you know, a moment of clarity?
Well, I'd rather have the motion modified for the three items, then.
I'll modify my motion to exclude number four under the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, the motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any further discussion? Do you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, could I just walk you through it real quick? So the, the new snack shack concession agreement is on your desk. It's a lengthy document. You've had it previous to this, so you've had time to review it. A couple of things. We've changed a little bit of how we're going to do things out there, but everything still requires NSP National, Dave helped me out, National Park Service, NPS is the acronym, their approval for anything out of the ordinary or anything that may flirt with the, in air quotes, destination word that we've all been afraid of. Our new vendor is in the audience, if anyone has any questions with him. But between Tom Trask and I and the vendor, we were able to come to terms late last night on a contract. So if there's anything, out of the ordinary is a poor term, but if there's something different that he wants to do there, such as put a bar on the deck of the snack shack... different that he wants to do there, such as put a bar on the deck of the Snack Shack, he needs to not only go to the National Park Service, he also has to get our approval. So other than that, it'll be somewhat business as usual. Now, he has given us an architectural layout, and I'll share that with you at some point when it's finalized, of what he's doing to the inside of the Snack Shack. I can tell you that it'll be substantial, and it's very well done. They're going to air-condition it, they're going to put in an exhaust system, they're going to do some substantial improvements that frankly, we benefit from. At the end of the term, when they leave, they don't leave like the last tenant did. And the last tenant didn't do anything wrong, because that's the way it was when he got there, and he took what was his. In this instance, the major improvements will remain as ours. So that's pretty much it on that one. If you have any questions, or want to meet the lead partner on it, he, again, he's in the audience. The second one is the Archibald Beach Chair Agreement, and that's basically just chairs, cabanas, and umbrella rentals at Archibald Park specifically. Now, you remember, we just bid this out throughout the city, literally a month or two prior to this, and the reason for that was, we didn't know that we were going to have the situation at the Snack Shack that we did. So we had to rebid this, and a different group got it. We met with them. They're impressive, to say the least, and their bid was impressive, to say the least, and we're very happy about that. And then finally, your contract for recycling services. We put the finishing touches on that today. The final copy is on your desk. Again, there was a significant increase. We've figured out in the budget how to pay for that. I think you're going to have a staff recommendation, probably this next time around, to at least push some costs back to the consumer, the resident, but at the end of the day, that's your call to make. So that's the thirty-second version of those three contracts. I can answer any other further questions. Otherwise, staff is comfortable with them, your city attorney is comfortable with them, and we would ask for your approval.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I noticed the National Park Service contact was in Tampa. What's the turnaround time, if we have a bid comes up? Because, you know, the government's slow.
They're slow. I get a turnaround, literally, within a week.
Sweet.
Yeah, yeah. They're very good to us. Again, they've been very... Every time I've contacted them, it's like, geez, Shane, you're doing something to improve the facility for the residents of Madeira Beach, you're okay. What they don't want is, for instance, a company that's going to come in there and do weddings every Saturday and Sunday on the beach at Archibald Park, that would constitute a destination, or bringing in a Quiznos sub-sandwich shop into there, that's a destination. But by allowing a company to put in a deep fryer, or have, you know, a beer tub on the deck, that does not, or even have acoustic music on the deck, doesn't define destination by anybody's standards at this point, so we're in good shape.
And the last item is the contract with the recycling. You're talking about bringing it up for the next budget cycle?
That's just a conversation. Right now, you guys are, the city itself, you all, are paying for that. I think that's a conversation that we need to have, once Vince and I get into this next budget, because it's going to be tight. And between that, you know, the stormwater fee, there's a couple of different things that, if you want to leave your millage rate stagnant, then we have to look at a couple of these other things. If you don't want to look at a couple of these other things, remember our millage rate being the lowest one in Pinellas County, and far from other full-service cities, needs to be adjusted a little bit. Not drastically, but it needs to be looked at. So it's, I think it's kind of a chess match at that point.
I was just trying to differentiate the next meeting or the next budget.
Next budget, sir. Next budget, not next meeting.
Okay.
All right, any other commissioners? And gentlemen, since you came, would you like to say anything, or do you have anything you'd like to bring from the commission?
Alan Kahana, United Park Services, three twenty Blanca. First of all, I just want to congratulate you all on the new city hall complex. It couldn't be more innovative, bold, beautiful project. I've been a general contractor and developer for over thirty years, and so I really want to congratulate you, and we're very proud to be a part of a new vision for Madeira Beach.
Thank you, sir. All right.
I want, just wanted to say, Alan, it looked to me you're like you're going to have some nifty things over there.
Yeah.
Nice food, nice little items that you're going to have to sell, like something on the beach, I'd be...
Thank you.
I'd really commend you. I read all this list of good food you got, so I'll have to have a goodie.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, if you look, the effective date is February one. City staff, you know, we have a new building official coming in on January. The reason that this, another reason why you had a special meeting today was, and this gentleman is a smart businessman, he wants to start spending money on outfitting that Snack Shack while we still have a month of construction. So the thing that I did not bend on, and he was very agreeable, it was a very easy negotiation, was February one is it. They're going to start paying rent on February first, but staff has promised that we'll do everything that we possibly can in our power to get them an occupancy permit, as long as, you know, they're ready to go. And so you're going to see a flurry of activity there between pretty much Christmas time and the end of January, because both our contractor and them and their contractor want to be out of there and operating by February one.
And it looks like right now that Duke Energy's there starting to underground the power lines.
You're undergrounding utility right now, and there was a slight delay there, and I got to commend Dave Marsakano. We did everything we possibly could to get that moved up on the schedule, and we had to work with several people at Duke, but Dave established a relationship to make that all happen a little quicker than what they had said, so that went relatively well as well. The one neat thing, I think, and you guys, you know, you took my arch away, so you guys got to consider giving me this, is I think, and we have a staffer that's working on it, as far, I haven't seen it on the west coast of Florida, but palm trees on the beach. And the installation, or the ability to do that, has been, at least from what I can see right now, granted. And so if there's any leftover dollars in that budget, I'll bring it to you, but I think having some palm trees on the beach side of Archibald Park would be something unique and different to this coast, and so we'd like to try that. It's a very minimal cost, we're talking a couple of thousand dollars, but I wanted you guys to buy in on that, so you don't show up one day and say, "What are these, what are these trees doing on the beach?" But so far, we're forty-five to fifty thousand dollars under budget, so the project, from a financial standpoint, is going along very thorough.
That's because I made you get rid of that god awful orange.
What was that, Terry? I didn't catch it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for that comment.
That's because I made him get rid of the arch.
Oh, yeah. That cemetery, thanks.
It would not have looked like a cemetery.
Okay, all right. So my question, do we have lights on the walkovers at Archibald Beach? We don't light it.
No.
We don't light it in any of them. I was just noticing that you're planning on staying open until ten and eleven o'clock P.M., so it's going to be dark, obviously, in the operating hours of the Snack Shack now. So if we could look into maybe lighting something up, so people don't trip on those as their...
The only problem with that is the turtle issue, so we'll look into that. The owner is turtle-conscious, is maybe a good word, but we'll have some lighting on the deck.
Duke Energy's putting turtle-friendly lights in the parking lot.
Right, right. So there might be something that we can do there, and if there is, we'll cooperate with the...
So we're trying to keep those walkovers as safe as possible.
Yeah, yeah. We'll definitely do that.
And I know they're barred on both sides, you know, as far as railings, we're good with that. All right?
Yeah, yeah. If you go through the entire contract, the one thing that I have to commend the new owner on is, they've been very, from a voluntary standpoint, willing to do some needs improvements to our facility, not just do a base job of outfitting it, and so that, he really wants it to be a cornerstone of the northern side of the town, and really do a nice job. And so what we've written into the contract is something pretty special.
And I appreciate you stepping out and coming to the northern side, because I know you have a business on the south side, so that's good. We're all one big happy family.
Shane, I wanted to tell you a story about trees on the beach.
Uh-oh.
In Madeira Beach. You like palm trees? There used to be, years and years ago. We had Australian pines all along our beach.
Yeah.
They were really beautiful. I don't know if anybody here remembers that.
Kathy loved those. Kathy loved those.
Oh, yeah.
Her favorite trees.
And when the wind blew, you know, they called them the Whispering Palms, but when the wind blew, they whistled.
Ah.
I mean, they really did with those, they had real long needles. They were beautiful. Do you remember that, Dave? And it was gorgeous, especially down at the south end. And all the way along the beach, there would be places where there would be those Australian palms. And we had that freeze in nineteen sixty-two, it killed them off. I mean, it was cold.
Except for the ones across the bridge, those were here for a while.
Yeah, there's a few, you'll see a few here and there. But down here, right where this big condominium is, Boca, it was listed, where that big trailer park was, they were all through there. And you could hear that whistle up at the diner. I'm not kidding you. When the wind blew through there, when you had a wind there. But anyway, honey, that's just a little step back in history, but we did, at one time, have trees on the beach in Madeira. And they were beautiful.
Staff is working on that. We won't do that without your approval, but I'm going to go out there next Wednesday and kind of stage it, see what the cost would be, but literally a couple of thousand dollars, and I think it would be something that might be trend-setting on the beach.
Oh, yeah. That would be the most popular thing. Even a palm tree, they like to sit on.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else from the commission? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, item four, which is additional spec approvals for Archibald Park renovations. Before I entertain a motion, would the city manager like to go ahead and give everybody a little idea what we're looking at there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and commission members, I think this is, the reason why this is before you is frankly, to be honest, a little CYA on my part, but the internal build-out staff has looked at, approved, we're taking care of that administratively. But you'll have to handle this, and the new operator is interested in changing the exterior color of the facility. The one thing that I can say right now, and I don't mean any disrespect to whoever made it that color, is it does look a little old and dingy, and what you want it to do is look bright and inviting and beachy. So we put three color renderings in front of you, and there's a reason for all three of them. The gray one, obviously, is because it's gray. Just leave it alone, we could lighten the tint, we could darken the tint. My suggestion would be to lighten the tint if you want to. The red one is there, not because I'm from Wisconsin and we have red barns in Wisconsin, but because it was the original color. And that's, you know, a reason why to do that color. A suggestion was made by the new operator, and staff, I think at the end of the day, probably likes this one the best, is to go with some sort of mango-ish type color, to make it bright and inviting, and, you know, you can picture a mango-type building with colored umbrellas on the deck, and those types of things, to make it look unlike a haunted house, to be honest with you. And, you know, again, I don't mean any disrespect, but I've used that analogy before. It's just not very inviting, the facility. So at the end of the day, this is your call. This is not like the archway. Everybody's going to be fine. Even the vendor has said, "If it's got to be gray, it's got to be gray." But we get a free paint job out of this. The new vendor is willing to do that. Part of our project was to do the whites. Whatever's white on there now, we're going to paint that, and it's a very minute cost, you know, under four thousand dollars. But this is not a minute cost, and so if we want to go a little drastic and go with the mango-type color, and it's not exactly that color, we'll get you a color swatch, so you guys understand exactly what it's going to be, but that's just a photoshopped or a photo-colored type rendering. It's your prerogative, so you can leave it alone, you can change it drastically, you can go back to the original color, but I would like some guidance from you on that one.
I like the color, the mango.
Yeah.
The light mango.
Much better.
And I think the vice mayor's brought it up perfectly before, and keeping everything to say in the signage and stuff, and if you look at the city logo and the city colors, it's mango. I mean, I think it would all fit in with the signage of the beach, it'd keep it very nice and beachy. I have a neighbor, actually, their home is a light mango, and it's beautiful.
Oh, this is pretty...
On the water.
There you go. If we can get a motion to approve that the new vendor would paint its mango...
I'm going to entertain the motion, so let's see where the motion goes.
Right.
A motion for a light mango or mango.
As long as the color swatch is approved by staff.
Okay. So the motion has been entertained.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Yeah.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion amongst the commission? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for your comments, and we'll move on.
Just keep blowing in your eighth pin.
That's the least of my worries.
Thank you, Commissioner Poe.
It's fine. It'll get some attention.
You get...
It will get some attention.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Lister?
No.
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
Oh, monkey. Come on, tear bear.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Shantz?
Double yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we're voting for tear bear, yes.
Did you call, I didn't hear you call, Commissioner, did you call the Commissioner Hodges?
Yes, Mayor Palladino.
Yes. All right. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, unfinished business, none? Report your correspondence. Does any commissioner have any correspondence? Okay.
Nobody writes to us.
I keep telling.
Mr. City Attorney, anything this afternoon?
Nothing to report.
And it's nice to see you, and actually, I haven't given you a chance to introduce yourself, so if you'd like to take a second or just...
Sure. I'm Brandon Huffman, I'm with Tom Trask's firm. He got late notice and couldn't be here today, so here I am.
Man, I'm telling you, attorneys are getting younger and younger, too. It's killing me. Mr. City Manager?
Boat parade is Saturday night. I got called out of town, so I won't be there. Dave is going to run the registration tonight. I think we've got about ten or twelve boats lined up, so if you've got anybody to encourage to attend tonight, to get it up. We have got to have one of the biggest prizes around, so we're expecting quite a...
I think a heck of a turnout tonight, and let you know, it's definitely up to fourteen, because I went ahead and did my, signed up today, so we're good to go.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just, and just one more thing, and I'm going to say this tongue-in-cheek, but I don't even know how to start. The next couple of months are going to be a lot for not only me, but for staff. For this, what you just approved today is a lot of work, and, you know, the contractor and the architect carry the brunt of it, but being the owner's rep on a ten-million-dollar project is a full-time job. Municipalities hire people to do that job for them, and you're looking at a couple of guys that are probably just going to try to balance that load. Not that we shouldn't have workshops, if there's something that you want done, if there's something new that's just, "Hey, we got to get this taken care of, let's do that." But I think, you know, three or four months ago, we were just like, bang, 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 we're having, you know, eleven to twenty-one things on the workshop. I'm just going to ask for a little bit of, you know, a consideration that we've got a lot going on, and we, it takes city hall out of it. You just gave a bid award for a million-dollar road project, that's going to start in three weeks. We just started the groin project, you don't even see it going on, but it's going on because of the tides.